Good evening. The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education is now brought to order on Monday, December 8th, 2014 at 7:00 PM. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance this evening reflects your interest in local education and it's greatly appreciated. Item number 176.15, pledge allegiance. I would like to introduce the students from Hoover Elementary School. Caleb Seizak and Emily Davis, if you will come to the front please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Muddell, if you can do the introduction, please.
Let's start with Emily. Hi, my name is Emily Davis and I am nine years old. I live with my mother, my father, my older sister Danielle, who is 19, and my older brother Stephen, who is 14. And we are all five years apart. I also live with my newborn nephew Christopher. He's about a month old. I go to Hoover Elementary School and my teacher's name is Mrs. Eunice. Boy, has she taught me a lot these last few months. Right now, in class, we are learning standard algorithms. When I have homework, I always do it before I go to my great-grandma Jojo's house and before I play. I always tell myself hard work plays second. The one rule at my house is to do everything you know, then the things you don't understand, my mom will help me with. Then I can go hang out with my great-grandma Jojo and Grandma Mary. When my mom comes to get me, and the routine is to get everything ready for school the next day. When this is done, I get my PJs on and I go to bed. And that is my autobiography about me. My name is Caleb. I'm in the 4th grade at Hoover Elementary School and my teacher's name is Mrs. Morris. I have two siblings. Their names are Hannah, she's seven, and Shelby, she's four, four months old. I like ma'am. I practice like crazy. I also really like baseball. I've been playing since I was four. I also enjoy playing video games on the Xbox with my dad. My favorite food is pizza. My favorite sports team is the Detroit Tigers and I really love the movie Thor.
Good job. Okay, Emily and Caleb, if you stand right there, Dr. Weaver's gonna come down. He has something for you from the Board of Education.
Okay, come right on here if you would. Emily and Caleb, how are you guys doing tonight? My son Caleb, he's 22 years old. Are you 22?
No, I'm nine.
Okay. Trust me, you're gonna be 22 one of these days. Okay, we're going to give you these awards. Emily, I'm gonna ask you first, who did you bring with you tonight?
My mother.
Okay. It's good to have you with us. Who did you bring with you tonight?
My mom and two sisters.
There they are. Okay. And did you bring anyone else from the school?
Mr. Bassett.
There he is. Okay. Well, Caleb and Emily, for your participation in the flag ceremony during the regular meeting of the Board of Education Wayne Westland Community Schools on December 8th, we're happy to present you with these awards. And when you put them on the wall of your room, make sure the paint's not fresh, okay? All right, thank you for being with us.
Make sure each of you, please. Make sure to sign the paper. Ready, three, two, one. One more. Okay, just you two, okay? Ready, two, three, one. Three. Thank you, Emily and Caleb, you did a great job. Moving on to item number 177.15, roll call, please. Mrs. Madison, present. Mrs. Schofield, present. Mr. Buckle, present. Dr. Weaver, present. Mr. Griffin, present. I am here and Mrs. Walker, present. Let the record reflect 7, um, 7 and 10, it's no absence. Item number 178.15, citizen comments. Just reading on agenda items only. Hello, how are you?
I'm well, how are you? Just a few questions. The agenda shows that Vandenberg is going to be demoed, but it also shows that you're going to possibly approve a lease for that building? Is it gonna be leased or is it gonna be demoed? I was just looking at the website, what is it, betterg.com, all the surplus equipment we sold. And I'm wondering, is there a way that we can get more money for the surplus equipment? Because we're selling buses for 1,500 bucks, that doesn't seem like a whole lot. I think we could get more, perhaps if we explore other avenues of sales. The school's being demoed. Last I heard, we had tried to sell these buildings, three years ago, maybe four. Have we tried to sell them again? Have we tried? I know the real estate market has turned up a bit and I'm wondering, I know we listed them for, I don't know, I'm thinking around a million each, I don't know, but I know we can't probably get that kind of money. But the question I have is, is it better for us to sell those, get them off our books and get the revenue that way? Or is the plan to throw the 900,000 at them and demo the buildings and then sell the vacant property to recoup our money? The other question I have is, if we don't have the money to demo the buildings now, why don't we just wait to demo them? Or is it, we've waited three years now, is another six months gonna matter that much till we get the money in the sinking fund? I think that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? 179.15, agenda. Motion to move. Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Mr. Griffin. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Oops, I missed one. Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Buckle?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the record reflect 7-0. Item number 180.15, review and approval of more resource items. This call, tell me.
Good evening. Tonight I have the pleasure of recommending Angela Zalli for the Assistant Principal position at Stevenson Middle School. Angie's a certified K8 elementary teacher with a middle school math and science endorsement. Angie joined the district in 2008 as a math and science teacher, but I should probably add, she's also Wayne Westland's graduate. She's a Rocket. Angie has been serving on her building's NCA committee, her school improvement committee, on the positive behavior support committee. She's also been the math intervention specialist at Franklin Middle since 2010. She's also been the district's secondary math content leader. She has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, two master's degrees from the University of Phoenix, and she holds an administrative certification. Angie's also been working as the interim assistant principal at Stevenson since December. Thank you. Motion to move. Moved by Mrs. Schofield, supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckle?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the record reflect 7-0. Congratulations.
I just wanted to take a minute and thank Dr. Harmala and the board for giving me this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to actually going home to Stevenson, because I was also a Stevenson Saint, and be a part of the wonderful team that they have over there, amazing staff, students, and families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you bring someone with you today?
Yeah, I did. I brought my husband, Todd, and then my son, Brennan.
Welcome. Item B, please.
Thank you. I'm also pleased to bring to you tonight a recommendation for Mr. Kirk Miles for the Supervisor at Transportation position. Mr. Miles brings to his position a wealth of experience from the Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Kirk began his career as a mechanic, then advanced in the Transportation Department to be the fleet manager, the transportation coordinator, the transportation supervisor, and eventually the Director of the Transportation Department. Most recently, Kirk has been working in the Wayne Westland Community School District in a temporary capacity as a sub-mechanic for us.
Thank you. May I have a motion? Moved by, okay. Moved by Mr. Griffin, supported by Mrs. Madison, oh, sorry. Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Buckle?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Let the record reflect 7-0. Congratulations.
I'm really looking forward to getting started. I've been subbing as a mechanic over at the bus garage and I've met some really wonderful people. And I put in a lot of years at Plymouth Canton and I hope to spend a lot of years with you folks, too. You're a great group and I really appreciate the opportunity. And I'll assist Sharice any way I can to provide safe transportation for our students of Wayne Westland Schools. And I also would like to say to Jason, congratulations. Thank you.
So did you have anyone with you besides your?
It's just me and the transportation folks.
That's the family to have, too.
Yes.
I just want to say through the chair of Mr. Miles, that I used to represent from the camp and you were there at that time. I wish you well and our, you know, I follow your career. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Madam President, and I would like to just say congratulations to Jason. His retirement was part of our consent agenda tonight. And, you know, you've been there all these years that I've been on the board and you were always great in the Transportation Department and you did a good job. Good luck with whatever the future holds for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's all appreciated.
I echo your words. Item number 181.15, review and approval of business services and finance. Mr. Larson Schider, item A.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna go over the information that I went over with Finance Committee, just because it actually goes over the history of our buildings and gives some of the information and rationale for the recommendation. When the district closed the six buildings in 2010, we hired a real estate firm to represent us in market buildings. Patchant Elementary was sold in 2011. Over the years, we've received sporadic interest and interest really picked up last year when we received Blanchett Middle School as part of the Inser disillusion. And of course, as you know, the Blanchett Middle School demolition bids were solicited by Wayne Risa and the Board actually approved demolition of Blanchett at a recent Board meeting. And June 2012, we completed negotiations on a land contract, this is just going into history again, to sell Kettering Elementary to Hattie Foundation, which was an Islamic school. Prior to closing, we did a title search, found that there were two parcels that had restricted deeds on them, that they could not be used for anything but public use. And one of those was under the school and another was under the parking lot. Unfortunately, Hattie Foundation is a private school, so they did not meet the restrictions, so the deal fell through. And June 2014, the Board approved a 50-year lease with the city of Westland for Jefferson Elementary. City is contracted with Career Tech, actually, to do some renovations in the school building. August, September 2014, we toured all of our vacant buildings with Wayne County for a possible relocation. Some of their programs are currently housed in Cave Beer Building on Michigan Avenue. Administrators of County were interested in Vandenberg and we had talked to the Finance Committee at that time. Unfortunately, they could not gain the financial support of administration to approve the lease of the building, so that fell through. A couple of weeks ago, the city of Wayne approached the district requesting to lease Vandenberg under a short-term housing while they repaired the roof of City Hall that collapsed a while ago. We, actually, I thought we would have a draft lease tonight. We're still working out some of the details, so the resolution, next resolution will, or the Resolution C, will be to approve the superintendent to negotiate the lease. And what the Vandenberg, or the city is looking to lease Vandenberg for the period of March through June of 2015. So it's just short-term lease while they're repairing the roof. The city will reimburse us for everything, utilities, maintenance, all of our costs, because basically what we're looking at is closing off utilities to all of our buildings after approval to, or demo. And hopefully, we'll bring the lease back to you in January. November 25th, I received a call from a real estate agent representing a hospital requesting information on Jefferson, Lincoln, and Vandenberg. Information was sent to the agent for their client review. I had informed the agent at that time that I was making a recommendation to the Board to demolish the buildings. I have not received any call back. This is, over the three-plus years, you know, as I said, we would receive calls, people would be interested, we would tour the buildings, and it would always fall through. Review of the properties. September 2014, Plant Moran Pressa reviewed and prepared options at the district's request of the vacant buildings. The options include reopen the district's school buildings for other use. As we've said before, the district has three years to reopen a closed building. Our buildings have been vacant for four years. After three years, school buildings are required to be brought into code, passing inspection before being used for school purposes. And we have that costed out during the review by Plant Moran, I believe this was in your packet, to the critical needs to reopen Kettering would be almost $2 million and $4.4 million over a six-year period to get it back in shape. Lincoln would cost $2.1 million and $4 million overall. Madison is estimated at $2.4 and $3.7. And finally, Vandenberg is estimated at $1.5 and $2.7 overall. So we looked at the cost to reopen the buildings for school use. Current enrollment trends do not support reopening the buildings for school use. We looked at selling or leasing the buildings, which we've been trying to do for four years now. We looked at partnerships, you know, to build, develop the property, and then finally to demolish the property, create open space for the development of partnership. As part of the review and research options, when Wayne Risa solicited bids for demolition of Blanchett, we requested that they add Kettering, Lincoln, Madison, and Vandenberg to be included in the bid as alternates. The thought was that defenders are looking at, at the time, there was probably 10, eight to 10 schools on the bid list. So with the volume, we figured we would get, you know, a better bid and also it was going through Wayne Risa. November 24th, 2014, Dr. Harmala and I met with Mayor Wild and Joanne Campbell of Wayne, of the city of Westland to review vacant properties and to ensure our understanding of the state's plans for future development that may align with the district's plans or future plans for the properties. Information and recommendation, Kettering, Lincoln, Mass., and Vandenberg Elementary Buildings are currently maintained in unoccupied mode. This requires utilities to be maintained and maintenance of the buildings and grounds. Expenditures for utilities in 2013, 14 alone totaled $159,757, all coming out of the General Fund, just to maintain the buildings in unoccupied mode. This toll does not include security, custodial maintenance, staff oversight, and repair of vandalism. And I would add that over the four years, that we've spent over half a million dollars on utilities, just utilities on these buildings. That's money coming out of the General Fund. As part of review and research of options, again, when Wayne Risa solicited bids for demolition, demolition of the Inser schools were requested, at Lincoln, Madison, Vandenberg to be included in the bids as alternatives. And eventually, we have a, we, again, we received those bids. I believe I put the information in your packet. It's also in your Board packet. And based on the carrying cost of the buildings, review performed, and current demolition bids, a resolution is placed on tonight's agenda. One, to lease Vandenberg to the city of Wayne, and then that will be demoed in September of 2015. So what we're actually doing is just delaying the demolition of Vandenberg in order for the city to use it. Kettering, Lincoln, and Madison would be demoed starting in January, they'd be completed by March and April timeframe. And funding to demolish buildings will be advanced by the General Fund to the Sinking Fund. Funds will be repaid to the General Fund from the Sinking Fund after July 1st, 2015. And that's also based on, a lot of that's based on the positive variance that we received from bid packet four. I don't know if you recall, but there was a $470,000 positive variance to the budget, so we were under budget by that much, that part, that's one of the reasons why we looked at going forward with this. I requested and received an opinion from Clark Hill on the expenditure from Sinking Fund and Plant Moran on the advance of funds from the General Fund to the Sinking Fund. There's no issues with either transaction. And what we're going to do is, we're putting the advance on the Board Agenda tonight for transparency and also to note it, and then we'll tell you when we have agreement after July 1st.
Great. I have a motion to suspend. Moved by Mrs. Madison?
Present.
Supported by Mr. Griffin. Any discussion?
Yes, no questions.
Dr. Weaver?
Through the Chair, Mr. Larson Schider, is there any way to redeem those parcels of land from the state of Michigan?
The two that are restricted?
Or are there others?
No, actually, when we found those two under Kettering, we did a title search for all the buildings. Those were the only two parcels. I've contacted Clark Hill and what it's a process that we have to go through with the state takes about six months and as soon as we receive approval, we'll start that process. What we'd like to do is clear all the parcels, so there are no restrictions, and then, you know, we'll have open use, we can approach developers, we'll not have to worry about, you know, which parcels are restricted.
Okay, thank you.
You just want to know the rest of the dollars. You just mentioned about approaching developers. Can you explain a little further what you mean by that?
Well, what we're, you know, as I said, Dr. Harmala and I talked with the city, city has partnerships with developers. We're also working with Plant Moran Pressa. Pressa would solicit, or actually, we could go off for bids with developers. You know, we could market it through an agent with, that's vacant property for development. But that's not something we're going to turn around and do immediately, that's something that we're gonna look at and we're going to get some more information on.
So would you say that, and essentially, it would be more so that we would be selling the vacant land to a developer?
There are various ways of doing it. You can sell it, you can lease it. You know, when I was in Plymouth, we had a partnership with a developer where we actually leased the land, so we had continued income coming in.
What's the intent for our district?
As I said, we're gonna look at it. But right now, properties are worth more as vacant properties than they are what the school building has.
One of my primary concerns over this is, back when school closings was going on, and some of the trustees may remember Hoover onboard, when school closings were happening, my husband and I addressed this very concern about the law with the codes. And that was, I believe, December of 2010, at Stockmeyer, when we had the large meeting. Back when, I could be wrong on the actual date, but when we had the public meeting for the community, we addressed concern back then about not only the code, but the expense on the utilities, the vandalism. The Century 21 packet that came, we brought up at that meeting about how the numbers didn't add up and seemed right. Back then, I was told that it was affordable and that those numbers were correct. And that all of that information, given that that was the best decision for our district and that I was wrong on the codes about the schools not being able to be reopened after four years. And here we are, four years later, with my very concern fully true, and it just makes it difficult to move forward without a definitive plan once again. And I'm not, I'm concerned also with putting the expense out there and putting the advance from the General Fund. When we have taken so much from our teachers and our staff as it is, I understand you're saying it's going to be replaced from the Sinking Fund?
An advance is just a loan from the General Fund to the Sinking.
My concern is if something falls through, but that can't happen.
A Sinking Fund is a millage that we receive, .9922 millas every year.
My concern is finding out that that advance, for some reason, was not okay to do. So just as...
I've talked to the auditors, I've talked to the attorney, everything's fine.
I was told that everything was fine with closing the schools and that they would be able to be closed, too.
If I can just insert a comment. Certainly, I wasn't here when all of that occurred, but I know I'm working with Jim. One of the things we're trying to do is look at what kind of liabilities we have with the buildings sitting open now. And I understand there was conversation back then about all of those items, and what you talk about in terms of code is accurate, as Jim shared, that to reopen them as schools, we'd have to bring them up to code now because they've been closed for so long. Our concern is they continue to sit and eat up money from the General Fund, and so we looked at ways in which we can free those funds up. We don't foresee in terms of enrollment, a need for those as a school. And as I wrote in the report I provided to you and will be sharing in the 100-day report, we see declining enrollments continuing because of the school age population decreasing, so not having a need to open the buildings. And my concern is, we need a strategic plan for the district and the facilities plan has to align with that. So one step toward that, at least in my view, is reducing the costs we have at maintaining those buildings and making sure that we create a plan for use that relates to what we're trying to do in the long term. And I recognize all those pieces aren't inflation and would be saying those are processes.
Right. And going back to, as you said, about the law and the schools needing to be closed for four years, because that's exactly my point, to be direct and honest, is I was looking for... for four years, because that's exactly my point, to be direct and honest, is I was lied to when I had the law right there at the open public meeting, saying, here's the law. And it just makes a very uncomfortable feeling now moving forward without having any kind of structure to move forward on. And I'm also looking at things such as options of scrap metals and what is happening with that, the boiler and-
When the bidders-
Do you want to verify that, Jim?
Sure. When the bidders come in, what they do is they will estimate how much they will take out in scrap, so that lowers their bid cost.
I didn't see that in my packet.
Well, that, that's part of the Risa bid.
Can you show me where it is?
I don't have a Risa bid with me. What we're doing is we're accepting the bid from Risa.
Because I, it's, that is not for me to see in my packet.
Okay. Well, we will not take any scrap. The people that have come in will demo, they will take everything away.
Right.
And whatever they saw were scrap, that's-
Right, and that's my concern with the expense we're putting out on top of the scrap and the money they're going to get from that, too. I'm trying to weigh out the cost and understand, how much are we paying out and doesn't that make sense? And do we have any supplies, materials, anything left in these buildings?
No, buildings are clear.
Because I know when you look in the windows at Madison, the last time I looked, there was dust down the hallways.
Madison has been cleaned out. That's all the, everything that was a mess and went out to the, in the auction, recent auction.
That's the auction. I have photos on my cell phone that there was stuff, not only inside, but outside.
Well, that must be scrap that, that would not be used, auctionable, or anything that's tangible that they would take off, and so it would just be demolished of the building.
And my concern is if there's anything of value that could be utilized at other schools. But that's my concern. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
I'm not going to reiterate what Dr. Harmala said because I concur with everything she said in terms of why we should demolish these buildings, but there's a payback on just the utility costs and vandalism and repairs and the construction. We might have to keep them in order under the, at least in, not inhabitable, but usable under the state statute. And, and we, they figured that out in terms of Kettering, it's two point seven four years we're going to get our money back for demolition, just in the utilities and vandalism repairs, et cetera, and anything else, you know. It's six point nine years, nine-one years in Lincoln, and that's because that's an older building, was built before we, the school district took it over, that was built in the Norway project. We just had a fifty-year lease with Jefferson, so that's odd. It's five point five-nine for Madison, which is the area that I live in. It's three point nine-nine for Vandenberg. I bring these up because, number one, we're spending that kind of money, you know, every year, and, and we're going to have, even if we don't do anything and just clear the land and let it sit there, we're going to get our money back over time. Now, but what I want to point out to the public is this, there's land available, particularly the Madison area where I live and where my colleague here lives, that can be reusable for maybe, and I'm not saying what it can be used for, but maybe we can work with the mayor of the City of Westland, and, and we've had those kinds of talks, and I'm sure the administration is going to have those talks, where we can develop some, either homes, I don't know what the appropriate use is, but it's zoned, it could be zoned residential or those kinds of things. And we are in a state of losing student population. We're not going to gain anymore because people aren't having the kind of children they had. It's just a fact of life, and it's only going to continue for not only our district, but look around. If we can make, have more housing stock in our district, then maybe we can break even again, and maybe we can attract new residents in our community, and that new residence and the children they, they bring and retain what we have can help us on this, you know, but, so, you know, I, I've been one along with the board members here that have said we need to take these down. I've certainly been supportive of that. There's a lot of good reasons why we should do that, because we're going to have a payback just in utility costs and maintenance costs, and, and they become isoler. I'm telling you, I'm not happy as a homeowner in my neighborhood, and I know my colleague sitting here is even closer than I am, so I'm not happy. And I, I for one of the members of the finance committee want these buildings taken down, and I, and I think there's a lot of good reasons why they should, and our community will be better off if we do that. So therefore, I'm going to be very supportive. I also echo the superintendent's comments. She's dead on with what we need to do in terms of facility study in the future as part of our program. So what are we going to do with the municipality, and how are we going to approach the cities and municipalities to help us get those pieces of land back in use hopefully in our community? And if they're not back in use, maybe it'd become a really good recreational area for people in our community. That's my kind of view.
I just want to be clear, I'm all for change, and I'm all for saving and doing what's fiscally responsible, but to me, part of that responsibility holds the accountability of knowing what the next step is going to be and, and having an action plan there. And, you know, one of my primary concerns is we will have lawn maintenance on the vacant lands and also the risk of them becoming dumping grounds, and that will become the school district's expense to keep the vacant land free of everything that's going, that could end up being dumped there with having the open land there. But most importantly, you know, Ron and I have talked with many of you in the past about approaching the city or inhabiting our own career tech center, work on turning some of those into houses. My concern is we're seeing just the moment of what we're saving and the finances on the utilities, but we're not projecting into the future like, okay. And I remember, I thought we had a meeting in, within the last year, where we had said as a board that we wanted to go options, that we were going to get some options brought back to us of what we could do, and-
If I could respond, I concur with you, and I think the superintendent just laid out that she's going to do that in the program for the facility part of her program, so I concur with you.
But once the buildings are approved to be demolished, that does limit some of the options, such as maybe we might want to sell it off and put it out for bid with the buses and make money off of the property and let somebody else pay for demolition of the building. Put, put the whole property of the building out for bid, and then we, it gets it off of our books that way, and we're not paying for the demolition.
Well, my only comment is that when I look at the maintenance cost, the cost to bring these buildings up to date, let's take an example, Kettering lawn is over four and a half million dollars. It's three and a half, it's almost four million dollars for Lincoln. I'm not willing to spend that kind of money to bring these buildings up to usable use under the state statute, and I think that, that would not be the best use.
I didn't say anything about bringing it up to use. I was saying rather than to pay to demolish, sell it.
I'm saying, you mean sell off after we demolish it?
No, prior to. I would, I would rather give fifty-hundred thousand dollars for the property of the building rather than paying two-hundred thousand dollars to demolish the building.
All right, I'm going to make one last point. Last point is this, if you want to sell these buildings, the people that want to buy these buildings are charter schools or private, and that is going to cut into our student population, and that I wouldn't support. If that, that, almost everyone that wants to buy them is that, except the City of Westland and the Jefferson School, that's the only one we've had that wasn't a private or charter school, who wanted to buy any that I'm aware of. And I'm not going to buy to sell to those people to take away from our student population.
My question is about our programs. Now, we've already said that we can't use this as an elementary school because we've gone past the point of no return. Do we have any programs in place right now that could use any one of these facilities?
We can't put a program in a facility without bringing it out to code.
All right, it doesn't matter whether it's a K-four classroom or not, none of our programs, not, you know, like adult community ed, a preschool program, they all fall underneath that?
We cannot use it for students.
All right, because one of the things I've always been pushing for was to expand our, our preschool programs, and it's not a possibility now.
All right.
Okay. You also mentioned something about talking with the mayor. Has that occurred yet?
Yes, we did. We met with the mayor and Joanne Campbell. You know, we told them what our plan was first, you know, we asked them if there was any use, or if they knew of anybody that would have use for the, the schools as a building. You know, we would look to try to save the demo cost also, but you have to realize, we've been marketing these buildings for almost four years now. I mean, we get approached by people that want it for a dollar, and, you know, and then they're going to open a charter school, basically. You know, that's mostly who I'm approached by, is charter schools, so.
And people, you know, I, I know that the county would still like to use, but they can't work out, they're, they're into the deal.
They, when I talked to the county representative, he did not see that happening in the foreseeable future.
Okay.
Because they have vacant space themselves. The thought is that they will use their space to capacity before they go outside.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So if, we did find a buyer for one of those buildings. Now that we've passed the three-year mark, am I correct in assuming that they would have to invest somewhere in the neighborhood of four million dollars before they could occupy it?
Depends on what they're going to use it for. I mean, that's to bring it back to use as a school.
Would there be some need for them to put money into the facility?
They would need to put money in facilities. The reason why, well, first of all, the city of Wayne is located at Vandenberg because it is in the city of Wayne, but that's a truffle floor and it's held up well. You know, floors where you have, you know, tiles, they're peeling up. It would take a lot of work to get in, I think, to inhabit one of the buildings, it would take a lot of work to get into it.
I do recall the construction of these buildings is somewhat different. I think Lincoln is going to be the most expensive to take down?
Well, it is wood, so there's not a lot of scrap that comes out of it, so that's why it's, yeah, because the, the cost of the demo comes down because they're getting scrap metal for it. So that's part of the bid, they get scrap and they reduce the cost. So it's a good point, yes, Lincoln is a little bit more expensive because it's primarily wood.
Assuming we're a year down the road and these, these properties are clear and available for, for redevelopment, I would assume that the board would have some say in a direction that this land might be put to use?
Well, I think, I think that's Dr. Harmala's plan, is to come up with a way to partner, develop, you know, have a strategy for the vacant properties. I will tell you that what we received from Cressa is a, the land is more valuable without the building on it. Developer wants it without the building. They don't want the hassle of demoing the building, so.
There is a specialist abatement piece?
On each one of them, yes. You know, it's not a high cost for our buildings because we have done a lot of the abatement in the past. You know, as I mentioned, Blanchett is, Blanchett, the demo costs for Blanchett are five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, you're looking at the average cost of our buildings of about two hundred thousand dollars because it's eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, I think, total. So, you know, pretty fortunate, some of that, some of the work we've done has lowered the demo cost.
Thank you.
I just have one real quick question in regards to Lincoln. The Norway area has a national historic designation. Does that affect anything that we're doing with the demolition of the Lincoln property?
That should not affect the school district. That, that's for-
It's for the whole, it's for the whole Norway area, it's a national historic district.
I'll double check on that, but I don't believe that would impact.
I mean, I know you can demo things because the city is demoing the property in the area. There may be another piece of paper that has to be signed.
I'll check that. I'll listen to it.
Okay. Who else?
I have, I have two more questions. It seems to be some of the concern, if these schools were to be sold off, that charters would open in our district. So are you telling me that a charter school could open one of our buildings as is, as a school?
They, they would have to put money in it to it to bring it up to code themselves. So whatever we would have to pay, they would have to pay.
So the risk of that would be minimal regardless, I'm not concerned of, I welcome many of them to come into our district, and I feel we have an excellent program here that can't be beat, that we offer our community. My next question is, you had mentioned that Dr. Harmala had met with the mayor. Could you share with us the direction, if he has anybody potentially in mind?
Yeah, no, our conversation was preliminary, so we could, my goal is, because we as a district do not have a strategic plan for the district or a facilities plan aligned with that, to know where we're headed over the next number of years, I wanted to have a conversation with him and also in Wayne to say, where, where are we headed in this community in terms of development, what are they thinking about, so that as we start to do the work internally, we don't head in a different direction if it would be helpful for us to align. So they started talking about, for example, initiatives they're looking at with grant funds they have relative to creating low income, or not low income, but easy to afford housing for families so they can purchase homes in the community as opposed to renting homes. Now, that's a grant they're starting to work with, they've not got it fully developed, but it's good for us to file that away in our heads to say, okay, we're not ready to move forward yet, but it's good to know what they're doing, because there are things we can do to say, okay, well, what if it's our piece of land, can we sell off that piece of land? Now, that's just hypothetical, but those are the kinds of things I want to be aware of as we look forward looking at. How do we begin to look at the use of this?
So tentative, there's nothing in the forefront of what we can do with it?
Correct, except for begin to create a facilities and a property assets plan for this district so that the very thing you're asking for, and I don't disagree at all, we have to have, so that we're able to say, what are the ways this property could be used? And Jim has taken the steps to start that with Plant Moran and Cressa, to say, what is the usable, usability of this land? Should we keep the buildings on it? Should we demolish them? The lesson we've learned from them is that developers would prefer no buildings because then they won't take care of the demolition. They're going to be, it's going to be more valuable to them, where you could potentially create an RPI or request for proposal to develop it in a way that's conducive to all of our agreements and working with the city. But those are steps we would have to take.
So we would at least make our money back in demolition?
That would be the goal.
That would be the goal or definitive?
I couldn't, well, obviously, I'm not going to create a plan, we're going to lose money, but I certainly can't tell you what a developer is willing to pay for those yet. But we do know from Plant Moran and Cressa, and that's their, their real estate arm of their work, is to look at it and say, what's the value of it? And the advice they've given us so far is the value is better than the value.
Just a little word, especially, we do have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah.
Doctor Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckelup?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mrs. Walker?
Yes, but the record effect's set in zero, motion passes. Item B.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. This is the resolution to fund the demolition with a payment from the general fund to the sink fund. As I mentioned earlier, this is, we've talked to Clark Hill, we've talked to Plant Moran, this is normal operations where you will do an advance, it's basically like a loan in anticipation of tax collections, which will come after July first, two thousand fifteen. And also part of the savings from the bid packet four, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that makes that possible, too.
Motion is in line. Subtle? Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Mr. Griffin. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I just have a quick question for the board. What is the difference in waiting till that money comes from the sinking fund opposed to borrowing?
Well, we're funding this out of the sink fund, and the sink fund does not have the money to fund the demolition, and-
I, I understand that, but why don't we- I, I understand that, but why don't we wait?
Uh, because the bids have a limit that we have to accept. Actually, we were supposed to accept by December first in order to accept for, per the RFP that Lisa put out. So the demolition is going to happen.
So I'm just trying to clarify, RISA set the standards on the bids, not us?
Yes, it's RISA's bid.
Okay.
And, um, it is mainly for the instrument properties, but we include ours as an alternate.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah.
Mrs. Schofield? I vote yes, Mrs. Walker?
Yes. But the record fact seven zero, does that need to be read into the record?
No.
Item C, please.
Okay, uh, thank you again, Madam President. Uh, this is the final piece. This is the lease agreement that, uh, we have, we have drafted a lease. We've sent it to the city of Wayne for, uh, the city to use Vandenberg and reimburse us for all costs of carrying. They will occupy the building from the last part of March through mid-June. And then after that, the building is set to be demolished. Subsequent will be law in person, probably in September, next year, after they vacate.
Motion is in order. Moved by Mrs. Madison?
Or...
Supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah.
I vote yes, and Mrs. Walker?
Yes, but the record fact seven zero. Item number one eight, two point one five, review and approval of middle school ELA textbook adoption. Mr. Albright and Mr. Faulkner, hello.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Before I turn it over to Mr. Buck, and I, I just, I want to thank him and his team for the work they've done. Uh, clearly, we've got the right people in place to do this work and bring this to you tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Aaron.
Any late time on the board, Dr. Harmelov, we appreciate the opportunity to come tonight. I'm going to do as little talking as possible because I'd really like you to get a chance to meet some of the teachers who, staff members who've come tonight to share with you a little bit about the process that we've gone through. I want to just set the stage for you very quickly, though, that we're here tonight because, um, these teachers, along with some of their colleagues, have been working hard over the past, uh, year or so to begin the process of aligning the Common Core state standards. The process has been pretty grueling and they have worked and they'll talk a little bit about that work this evening. But really, ultimately, I'm here tonight because it felt was financially prudent to do so. And I bring this adoption proposal to the board this evening because recently, in a proposal that we were given originally, when we were looking at piloting a series of materials that our teachers had chosen, we were approached with the opportunity to save a significant amount of money by looking at early adoption of those materials, which was not originally planned. And as I've outlined in the letter that you have in your board packets, uh, we do have the opportunity to save a significant amount of money, maybe sixty thousand dollars, by looking at early adoption. And so what I've tried to do tonight is work with the teachers here that I've been introducing to you to talk about how we want to be sure that we have the right materials, that it's not just a financially prudent decision, but it's the right materials. But at the same time, I would feel negligent not bringing the opportunity for the district to save a significant amount of money by making the move a little bit earlier than we had anticipated having the conversation. And so tonight, I want to introduce you ELA teachers in the district who currently teach at Franklin Stevenson, Mandy Rosinski, Mandy Obersky, Shayla Weston, Mary Guera, and Josh Ricklinkey. They're all going to be sharing with you tonight different aspects of the program, so I'm going to turn it over to them and then I'll answer any questions you have certainly when we're all done.
Thank you so much for having us here this evening to tell you about, um, this really wonderful textbook that we're getting ready to adapt or that we would like to adapt. I just want to briefly, um, share with you that I'm a district content leader for secondary ELA. Uh, and so part of my role has been to kind of facilitate this as we looked at these different materials. So we started talking about how we really needed, um, some more rigorous materials that aligned to the Common Core state standards. Um, it was close to about a year and a half ago now. Um, so last year during these committee meetings, when it was pretty apparent that we wanted to look at some textbook materials, Aaron began looking through, um, publishing companies that were very clearly aligned to the Common Core. He didn't want to bring in any, any questionable materials. He wanted to bring in materials that he knew, um, and that after presentations, we all knew were very aligned, um, exactly where we needed to be for our students to move ahead with the standards. So we began looking at this process. We looked at several textbook companies. We had presentations, um, to the committee. Um, so anybody who wanted to come to these presentations were able to come. And after a while, having the materials in our hands, in the classrooms, we were able to look at them. We had attended the presentations. We decided, um, and the committee decided that the best thing to do was to move ahead with the collections materials. Um, we offered the pilot to, for, we had narrowed it down. There were two that we were looking at. We were looking at Houghton Mifflin and we were looking at National Geographic. And we offered the committee, anybody, um, any of the middle school teachers who wanted to pilot could, um, and they could choose to pilot either one. Everybody who chose to pilot went with Houghton Mifflin. Nobody chose to pilot any other materials. They just felt that Houghton Mifflin was the most streamlined material that we had and it offered everything that we needed, including a ton of technology. Um, so from there, we went ahead and we were able to pilot and, um, with the professional development we had last year, our PD days were spent this year in the professional or with Houghton Mifflin's professional development again. Um, at that point, everybody had agreed to take on the pilot, um, and to do as much as they could with the pilot. And so we, we were moving ahead. Um, the teachers that you see here are teachers who have used it regularly, every day in their classrooms. Um, they've brought questions and concerns to Houghton Mifflin and Houghton Mifflin has been quick to respond. So, um, I hope that you see what we've seen in Houghton Mifflin, that it really is the best for our kids. Because I don't use it quite as much in the classroom, just in the, in the intervention specialist role, I'm going to hand it over to the people who are using it every day.
Hi, I'm Mandy Obersky and I teach eighth grade ELA at Stevenson. And I just want to kind of, uh, talk for a moment about where we're coming from. Um, before we were using the collections, the elements of literature textbook that we were using is at least ten years old, I believe older than that even. Um, so when the Common Core standards were introduced, obviously, it didn't really align anymore with what we needed to, um, teach our kids. The, some of the stories we worked, some of them didn't. Um, the informational text that was in there was very, very small. And we know that's a really big standard in middle school for ELA. So we were finding that we were spending a huge amount of our time, um, running around, trying to find things to pull in to meet the standards. And we were pulling in things that we thought were good and, you know, looked good to us. This doesn't meet the standard, but if nothing was really research-based, we couldn't be a hundred percent sure that what we've been piecing together here was truly meeting the needs of our kids. Um, also spending a lot of our own money on some of these materials and resources. With, um, the collections that we've been using, we have found it's a great mix of the literature that we need and especially the informational text, which, uh, my colleagues are going to share about in a moment. And we find that with our old textbook that we were using, we really truly weren't meeting the needs of our kids like we should be. And with this textbook, we feel pretty secure that we are. So I'll turn it over to, uh, Mary. Mary, thanks.
Good evening. Um, I am Mary Guera, teacher at Stevenson. I teach advanced English, um, seventh grade and eighth grade, um, along with, um, a straight eighth English. Um, one thing that I, you'll hear a little bit more about, but one component that I really liked is that there, um, the program has a reteach slash enrichment, um, area, I would say, that really helps to meet the needs of all of our learners. And given the achievement gap, um, in our school, it really works out well, uh, with, with reaching all the students. Um, this, you'll hear a little more, bit more too about, um, some of the, um, the layout, I guess, of the program. And what I really find with the students is that they're more engaged with this, um, program than I've, than I've seen before, mostly because the literature component, that the literature standards that we teach and the informational standards that we are to teach oftentimes don't intertwine. And so what, in the, um, collections, they have, for example, um, one of the stories for seventh grade is about a shipwreck. A girl who goes, you know, an adventure story, a fiction story, a girl in a shipwreck and her, her brother. And then it leads into an informational text about a true story of Abby Sutterland, um, a young teenager whose parents are supporting her in sailing around the world. Then it goes into some video and some interviews with the family because one of the standards is teaching interviews. So you can kind of see how the students buy into, um, the various, uh, standards, um, based on their relevance. So I think that that is a, a key to, um, this whole program is, is that the kids are definitely engaged. And to me, that's, kids who are engaged are, classroom management is, is better. Kids are able to learn more so because they're interested. Vocabulary is a, um, is a standard that a lot of our students struggle with. Vocabulary in this, um, collection or this, um, program is more suitable, I think, for the higher level thinking. For example, and I won't give too many examples, I know it's, it's going to be too much, but for example, in years past, I would find that vocabulary, when you're asked vocabulary questions, a lot of times the question itself gives context clues. For example, the teacher put her head down because the kids were rambunctious. So in that question, kids can kind of figure out what rambunctious means. Where here, they're asked to apply it to their full, their own life. Recall a time you were rambunctious and so on. So the higher level thinking of the program is definitely evident. And I think, um, that's definitely something that our kids need.
Good evening, I'm Shayla Weston. Um, I've been teaching in the district for seven years. I've taught English in, at both Franklin Middle School and now I'm happy to be here at Stevenson. I've taught eighth grade, um, I've taught the foundations classes and I've also taught, um, the higher classes, the, I guess, the AP classes, the TAC classes. Um, I taught using the old textbook, the Elements of Literature textbook for a while. And when Common Core came to, um, to the table, it was kind of hard for us to meet the needs of our learners with what we had before, being that we had a textbook that really just kind of hit on the literature standards. There's basically, um, five main pillars of Common Core that we need to address is literature as ELA teachers. Speaking and listening, there's language, there's informational text, there's literature, and what am I forgetting? And writing, of course, a little bit, sorry about that. So, um, for planning, it was very difficult as teachers. This is my eighth grade team right here. We would kind of take on different components and, and try to tackle things. And what we would do is we would try to develop units of study. We knew we had good literature pieces from our old textbooks, but going out and trying to find informational text was next to impossible with the limited resources that we had. As Mandy mentioned, we were having to pay, she was our teacher's paid teacher go-to person. She came up with great stuff, so we were sharing that. Mary and I would work on different writing pieces. We'd be pulling things together and planning was literally a nightmare. Um, on top of it, we were trying to bring in the speaking and listening standards by using technology and trying to get the labs and it was just really difficult. Going forward with assessing our students and trying to figure out how are they growing these students? How will we measure this growth with such splintered planning? There was no consistent measurement at all. Um, it was very unproductive. The last year was truly a struggle. I am very grateful that we are asked to be a part of this selection process. Um, I know there's other districts that don't even ask that of their teachers, so I am grateful for that opportunity. I feel confident that having that experience of struggling and planning backwards, I guess you could say, and trying to, um, figure out a way to do what we needed to do best and then be presented with this and the collections, um, textbook, I feel like, wow, this is exactly what we were trying to do. Not to mention that we're looking at this textbook, but eighty percent of what this textbook represents, there's so much technology that we still have to kind of delve into, um, and get used to. There's writing components, the assessment that Josh is going to touch on in a second, it's just amazing. Um, there's something called My Smart Planner, which truthfully, to be honest, in piloting this, again, I've got to get a little bit better with it, but the opportunities are limitless. On top of it, for teachers who really want the option and the freedom to plan, it's all there. Um, you're not, you know, it's not a cover-to-cover type thing where we've got to go from the beginning to end. You can pick and choose what you, what you need. There's a close reader piece that goes with it. Um, but just in planning, um, online, it really just kind of opens the door in so many ways. And we are in an age of technology. These kids all have their own login. They have the textbook online. They're able to write online. They're assessed online. It's graded online. It makes our job so much easier and I feel like it's kind of just all there. I feel like I'm doing my job so much better. And this is the only position I've held, like I said, in the district. And seeing where we're coming from and where we're going, I feel like this is the best choice. And again, I really appreciate being asked to be a part of this process. So with that, Josh?
Good evening. Um, I've only been teaching here for three months. But I have fifteen years' experience behind me. Um, and I've been integrating technology for the past fifteen years and I've seen how technology has changed. Uh, I want to speak about two things versus assessment. These materials mean nothing to us if we don't understand where our students are and how effective we are at teaching them. Okay? So when we design assessments for Common Core, we have to bring in all of these standards. Not only the multiple choice, you know, standardized test method, but also the performance task, which we saw in the, I guess, failed pilot of, uh, some of the standardized tests that we saw last year. And what's going to come down through the state, uh, both in this year and as they rebet out, uh, the assessment process for next year. This program provides us with all of that. Uh, we're provided with literally hundreds of multiple choice, standards-based assessment questions, uh, with readings, uh, that will directly simulate a standardized test. We're also provided with performance tasks that the students will, um, complete at the end of each of these collections, um, where they bring in data, uh, they do research, um, and they provide a finished product. Uh, so the assessment piece is excellent. Uh, and it brings you right into the technology because the assessment piece directly aligns with the technology that the district currently has. Um, you'll see a CPS clicker up there. I give all my tests on CPS clickers. They're a little remote, so the kids use. Gives the kids instant feedback, integrates immediately with ExamView software, which is installed at every computer in the school district. Okay? So I can give my students immediate feedback. I can also track over time their growth, uh, in the different standards, so I can pinpoint and identify in my classes which classes are achieving on which standards and which classes need to be re-taught or, um, you know, be caught up with my other classes. The technology piece, uh, it's great for us now, but it's even better for us in the future. Uh, currently, the technology that's provided for us, we have a dashboard. Um, you'll probably see it in any of our rooms, on our smart boards on a daily basis. The dashboard provides us with copies of the teacher's edition, student edition, additional resources, the FYI site that you saw up here earlier, which provides, um, monthly updates of new informational texts that relate directly to the readings that we're doing. Um, we are provided with audio of every selection in every book. So if we have students who have trouble reading, it, it's no longer go to Audible and try and find the book. It's provided with it. Students can access this book on their cell phones. They can access it on tablets. It, it's pretty much everywhere, any computing device that you have, you can access the textbook. And that's why I talk about the future, because as we integrate more technology, we want to, we want a textbook system that's flexible, um, to meet the needs of, of our digital learners, because that's what we have. They're probably looking at cell phones more than they are at textbooks. We know this. So let's give them the textbook on their cell phone. Let's get the learning going in a, in a digital manner and, you know, collaboration comes along with it and everything else. So the more technology we get, the more we can integrate. But we can integrate perfectly right now with what we have. Thank you.
I really want to thank this team for the work that they've put in on the last year and a half and their colleagues that aren't here this evening, for even coming to the city to share. This has been a, a work of, of labor from the, um, I wanted to just share with you that now that you've heard some of the pieces about this material... you've heard some of the pieces about this material to tell you why we're here tonight. This is an adoption that began in its early phases, as Annie shared, about a year and a half ago. And as they determined they were looking at the textbook, we began getting cost proposals from districts to determine, is this even a viable option for the district? That information was brought to the district cabinet at the time to make sure that we would even begin looking at it. And we were able to find some cost savings. We pushed very hard with some salespeople. We had some very tough conversations with them. We made it clear to them the situation that we were in. Recently, we had a presentation made of this material at curriculum council with just simply information that the pilot's going on. Within a couple of weeks, Holmiflin approached us and gave us the opportunity, saying that they really wanted to end their annual year in an upswing and Wayne Westland represented a very large investment for their, both for their intellectual property, because it's nice to have your material in a district that's well-respected like Wayne Westland, as well as financially. And to make that feasible for both of us, they offered us a very large discount of about forty-seven thousand dollars in order to adopt the materials before January first, rather than waiting until the spring and looking at adoption at that time, if it was something we were interested in doing anyway, to make it more financially feasible for us. I pushed a little bit harder with them and they came back and actually added on a twelve thousand dollar increase to the professional development end, so we weren't paying for those costs over the next three years, which brought the savings to nearly sixty thousand dollars, assuming an adoption occurred before January first. Now, I can tell you in no uncertain terms, and they've been very clear, that they'll be happy to sell some material after January first, but the discount is off the table and they are not willing to extend that price break because we were already getting a price break at the two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. I'll go on further to tell you that this is not new money that we're asking to be added to the budget. This was a forecasted budget because we anticipated a textbook being needed for seventh and eighth grade ELA. And so on July first of last year, I worked with the business department to make sure that two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars was budgeted out, because that was the original quote from the book that they were looking at using. What this would mean is that if we were to purchase this before January first, the district would recognize a real sixty thousand dollar savings that could be returned to the general fund from money that has already been budgeted for this current school year. And so this is not money that would be added to the budget, but simply removed from the budget and returned back to the general fund, utilizing only a portion of what we originally forecasted for the budget this year. I want to go on just to let you know that I presented these materials to the teachers after doing a lot of work, making sure that I only presented them the best. And there was no uncertain terms that the teachers found this material hands down to be the one. I would not share with them my priority. I would not share with them my preference. I would not even share with them pricing between one textbook provider and the other. I want them to make a decision first and foremost on merit. Now, I will tell you that the other textbook company came back for the exact same adoption using their materials at four-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. This represents a significant savings for many of the other textbook providers we look at. I did not tell the teachers that when they made this decision. As a matter of fact, several of them asked and I just wouldn't share that with them. They made this decision based on the merits alone. When you add on the fact that it's less than half the cost and on top of that, now saving under sixty thousand dollars, this is the best opportunity we would have at utilizing absolutely one-hundred percent Common Core-aligned materials that are copyrighted 2015, which hasn't even occurred yet, for a six-year adoption of all of their digital resources that we updated consistently over the next six years, then we would be able to utilize them. So we would actually have seven full years of the materials, because this year is considered a pilot. And so we would be six years forward utilizing materials, refurbishing the consumables will be part of this quote, as well as all the digital access for teachers and students would be included for that six years going forward. And on top of that, our teachers would have the opportunity to choose three novels per student that they chose using their classroom, on top of the teacher and student materials. And all of these are things we've pushed for with our salespeople to make them aware that we're gonna make every dollar stretch and go where it needs to go. So I can assure you, we've been as financially prudent as possible in this process while maintaining the integrity of the materials that we have our teachers and students using in the classroom. So with that in mind, I certainly welcome any questions, if they're academic questions. Certainly would welcome the teachers to share their responses with you because they're using the materials every day. If there are questions not related to the academic portion, I'd be happy to answer them for you as well. Thank you so much for your time.
To address the statement about it being overwhelming, that's kind of how I think we felt for the most part last year. The standards are what changed, so knowing that everything changed as far as what we were responsible for in instruction in the classroom, that's what changed. So that was kind of overwhelming, because we had to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, what do we have and what do we have to do to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our learners as well as hitting all of the standards? We didn't have what we needed. And starting to go back and pulling from different places, it just wasn't working. And we did that for a year and it was very difficult. It was very time-consuming and it wasn't what was best for kids. When we saw this, it was like, oh my gosh, this is what we've been waiting for. This has it all, plus more. That's the part that I like, is that we do have a flexibility. Josh is a technology guru and I know that I would like to meet with him more and learn more about it and learn that component of it, but it just feels like it's all right there for us. We're not spending half as much time and we can move forward and address the needs of the students while aligning a Common Core.
So it's already being used, it's just not efficiently implemented?
We at Stevenson are using it, so we started the school year using this textbook. And on top of it, there are some things, you know, that we will use other things in the classroom, you know, when we need to. We'll need, you know, just the flexibility is there. But this is just, this was the answer for us. Very, very much easier. And I love the technology part. I look forward to getting to know that part more and working with that. That's what I know I have to work with.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckland?
Yes, I'd like to thank the committee as well. I have some knowledge of what goes into adopting a textbook and I know it's a great deal of work. I also know how little thanks you get for doing that, so I do appreciate what you've done. The consumables, I wasn't clear when you were talking about those, are they paid for through the six-year period or is this an ongoing expense?
The consumables are part of the six-year quote, so the teachers receive them this year as part of the pilot at no cost, based on Holmiflin working with us. Going forward, they'd be replenished automatically, one for every student we've purchased at the quote rate that we originally started with, which we anticipate will cover the entire six years with extra workbooks on hand for students who are added in.
So I'm a little slow. We're not going to see any additional funding for the consumables?
Not for the next seven years, including this year. You will not see any additional costs at all for this program. It's all tied into the original quote.
A couple of things caught my ear when the presentation for being that. One is Common Core, the other is higher learning skills. These are difficult things to accomplish. And if you've got a learning platform in this textbook and all of the ancillaries that come with it, that will allow you to teach that and to measure it as well, I would say that you've probably got something well worth the investment of money that the board is willing to make or I hope is going to make, also the investment of time that you thought were going to be required to make. I'm sure that there's more information in that system than you could possibly cover in a year and you'll have to be sorting through. But I haven't heard anything that sounded anything except really exciting.
And I would add, just to be clear, that it's not just our opinion, but the state of Louisiana did a year-long curriculum study of all math and ELA curriculums that claimed to be Common Core-aligned. And the collection series in forty different areas received a high rating on all non-negotiable areas and really only received a low rating in four negotiable areas. Two of those were based on not having novels, which we have worked out with our salesperson to include as part of this adoption. The third being that a teacher planning tool didn't exist because they had reviewed it so early, that My Smart Planner wasn't part of the program at the time and that has since been resolved. So really, it receives forty out of forty marks when you look at the review criteria they used in the state of Louisiana when they did this curriculum review. So it's certainly not just our opinion that it's good material. We've got a very large group of people in Louisiana who've done the same thing.
Mrs. Liddell?
I'm sorry, you're going to hear ghost of classroom teacher past here at this point. My biggest concern is always technology and compatibility of new software, whatever, and us having aging hardware issues here in our district, because no matter how much we buy, it's always out of date by the time you unwrap it. So I want to make sure that we have computer hardware here that is compatible with what we are going to be receiving from this company.
So there's no software involved with this package. It's all web-based. I probably should ask Mr. Rick Lickedance, who's more than myself, so feel free to chime in. But it's based on a system which he can probably tell you even better, it's something called HTML5. I want to talk a little bit about the...
Yeah, a little bit of background. I was the technology lead for several schools, including Xavier before it closed, and we looked at several digital packages. A lot of them were based on Flash, which is the issue that you're talking about. All of a sudden you have an iPad. iPads don't run Flash. You can't run the software. HTML5 is platform-agnostic. It'll run on anything. So from the cellphone I have in my pocket to our smartboard, digital hubs, everything is very seamless in the way it's presented. Again, as more portable digital devices are put into our students' hands, the more technology aspects that we can take advantage of. But as far as compatibility, you know, this one pretty much knocks it out of the park.
As a classroom teacher, I would not have difficulty accessing all the web-based or however it is served up on my classroom computer, as opposed to having to run it at home or access it at home because I have a different version at my house.
Correct. Any modern web browser, including the latest versions of Internet Explorer, Google Chrome, Firefox, they will all run the software without issue.
Okay. Okay. A motion is in order. Some move. Support moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Mrs. Stokil. Any others?
That had never really been through curriculum council, it would be, I went to this wonderful program last weekend and we're gonna do this in our classroom this week. One of the things that we tried very hard to do was make sure that everything cleared curriculum council, that guidelines were met, policies, if you want to call them, practices were established to make sure that enough time and research went into looking at materials. From what I'm reading here is that the materials were starting to be used in September and here we are in December. It has been a longstanding practice in the school district to use materials in a pilot for a school year, so that all bugs, issues, questions, concerns can all be worked out before it's rolled out to the students in a complete form with the teaching staff. That doesn't seem to have happened here. I spent a lot of this weekend thinking long and hard on this one, because you've got the issue of financing, this great deal that they're giving us, and then we've got procedures that we've used in the past to protect ourselves. And this is the conundrum that I've gone through all weekend long. The other part of this is I'm freaked out by lame duck legislation and how it might possibly affect this school district going forward. And one of our jobs as trustees is to be fiscally responsible and make sure that we don't run this district into a ditch. I'm concerned about procedure and I'm concerned about financing on this, that I'm almost positive that, you know, I've got great confidence in your abilities to work another deal with this company if they really want our business after we've been able to work with this program for a year. Because I kind of get the impression that maybe they might be using us as a guinea pig also in rolling out these materials to work out bugs for them. And I'm passionate that, you know, we might be able to work a deal on June with this company moving forward also. So, you know, I'm trying to take the emotional part out of this, that I taught of the materials that these people were supposed to be using this year. That was a long time ago, because it wasn't, you know, they adopted the last year I taught. So it is in need of being replaced, but sitting on this side of the table now, I have to be fiscally responsible and I also have to make sure that procedures are followed too, so that we don't get ourselves in a situation where the next person that comes through says, we want to implement this right now and we want money for this right now, but we haven't tried it out. So I don't want to set precedent for the next thing that comes along down the road. So that is my concern going forward with this, that maybe we need to take a step back, work out a whole year, and then come back into this. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, she just, Mrs. Liddell just raised a question I had sitting in the back room and I threw the cheer of Mr. Baumann. What happens if the state decides in their wisdom, again, that Common Core is not going to be the choice? What are our alternatives?
Well, the materials at the core are good materials, period. Regardless of their alignment to the Common Core, the fact that they have aligned themselves to the Common Core at a higher level means that our students will only excel if those standards are lowered for any reason, because those standards have been set so high for them that these materials will only make them more successful. The standards were removed back to the GLICs, to the grade-level content expectations of the past, which I don't anticipate, but certainly don't want to predict what lawmakers will do these days. But I would say that these materials have already been set at a high bar, as you talked about, the high level of engagement in the text, the better appropriate vocabulary that's utilized. So if the standards were returned back to the standards of previous years, it would simply mean that our students were more prepared for those standards, because the standards wouldn't be raised higher. They'd been already placed there with the Common Core. They would simply be lowered and so these materials would only make them more ready for those standards. I don't anticipate that being a problem at all. It doesn't go the other way around, though. You couldn't take the old stuff and make it higher level, but you can always take the higher level stuff and make sure that you hit the lower level standards if they were to do that.
Well, you know, I think that the parents in that committee needed to hear that. We don't have any control of the legislature in their wisdom about what's best for educators, which we might disagree with. So I share my colleague's concern, but we'll have to do with those as they cross the bridge, I guess. I don't think anybody knows exactly where Common Core is going with this legislation. I just don't. And I share her concern, but I like the savings here and I think we gotta go forward and tread lightly and so that we're not out of step with, quote, State Department of Education and their testing program. I'm sure we have the personnel here to deal with that. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Buckland?
Am I correct in assuming that the committee and the people piloting the textbook are a hundred percent pleased with what they're working with?
Absolutely are. I mean, you're seeing a large portion of them here tonight. Remember, the middle school ELA department is a small group because they teach one-hundred-and-sixty students apiece. It's really a group of eight or nine teachers between Franklin and Stevenson. It's not a large group like you'd see in elementary. And so you're seeing a large group of them here tonight and there are other individuals who are using the materials. There are those who are not piloting the materials currently because they weren't part of the pilot group and or chose to look at piloting materials later in the year with the flexibility they were given. And many of them, in fact, we asked their decision-making to the group who is using the materials on a regular basis. The concerns that have been raised have been addressed by Holmiflin. There were some concerns arising about lower-level learners. There was some work that they did, as you heard a little bit about tonight, about reteaching those materials and looking at enrichment opportunities. And I think we've only really scratched the surface of what we're gonna be able to do with these materials and what it contains that we haven't even gotten to yet. So I think that many of those concerns were tertiary and could simply be removed by simply identifying where those resources were and part of what we're adopting. Again, it's such a depth of resources that are available to us because of the digital aspect, that I think, I just think our teachers need to be exposed to those things and that's part of that professional development implementation that would go on.
I also share Mrs. Liddell's views that it's important that we maintain the integrity of the curriculum council. Still, my experience with curriculum council has been that they're likely to approve any project that comes before if it has the strong recommendation of the committee and the piloting group. So I, has curriculum council been introduced to this?
Absolutely, on multiple occasions. So at the end of last year, before the year ended, we introduced them to the materials to let them know that we were looking at the pilot, so that they were aware of it. Early this year, Shayla herself, Ms. Weston, came and presented curriculum council. Prior to us knowing about the price break that we could receive, she presented to them her experiences with the materials, so they were aware of what was going on. The following month, because of the price increase, we took this curriculum council for an adoption approval. That's when the entire team came, as well as Holmiflin, bringing in one of their presenters to share with them. presenters to share with the group. It was presented and voted on there and approved by the group based on the guidelines that are set in place for curriculum council. So they have approved this material for early adoption.
Curriculum council?
They have, yes, as of their meeting in November.
So our concerns about sidestepping curriculum council are not.
It's gone through all the processes, including the LA committee itself, to curriculum council, to the superintendent's cabinet, and the Red Services as well. Last stop would be the Board of Education. So there's nothing that has been sidestepped, and all procedures have been followed in that regard. And typically, yes, a pilot would run a little bit longer. And again, the only reason we'd be here now is simply just to make sure that we make a financially prudent decision. If this is something our teachers feel this strongly about, and we can access the savings, then we would feel negligent in not bringing the opportunity to make that decision tonight. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion's on the floor. Roll bubble, please. Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Buckelup?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
I vote no. Mrs. Walker?
Yes. The record reflects a six-point vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 23.15, Board Officers Transition Process. Mrs. Madell?
Thank you. Each year, as per our board operating procedures, we can visit the existing trustees and find out if there is a preference for them to be serving as officers in the next coming year. I also see that our soon-to-be-seated trustee is also in the audience, so I will also avail upon her for an opinion as to whether she wishes to hold a board officer seat. With that said, I'm just going to go right in, throw and ask you what you are interested in holding for the next school year, not school year, but next calendar year. And this information is no way binding if you change your mind or have thoughts about what you have said that you would be interested in at this meeting. Like I said, it is not binding. And we will still have the regular election process in January where nominations will be accepted. Voting will take place. This is just an informational piece. With that said, any questions? All right, Mr. Griffin?
With the understanding that this is what you just said, vice president.
Dr. Weaver?
Vice President or Board Secretary.
Mr. Buckelup?
Any one to stand for any office at this time?
Thank you. Mrs. Walker?
Same in your house.
Mrs. Madison?
Actually, I have a few more words to the, if you don't mind. It's been two years of me being on board, and I want to thank you for the nurturing you have done with me. In the very beginning, you invited me to slow down and stay as trustee and learn as much as I can until I felt comfortable. And with that being said, great leaders, great, great leaders. And I trust my fellow trustees to rotate the board positions to allow other trustees to serve in other roles, and therefore I will serve in any capacity of position that you all choose for me for the upcoming year. And I would like to encourage all of us to consider allowing everyone to be able to rotate roles a little bit.
I will do anything but president. I like my wife right now. Mrs. Heinz?
A trustee.
A trustee?
Yeah.
Good choice for your first chair.
Thank you.
So this information will be published out to everybody for consideration. Thank you, Ms. Madell. Item number 18.15, Superintendent Report.
Thank you, President Walker. Good evening, Board of members. Tonight I have four items to share with you in our community. I will not apologize, but one of them is a little bit of a blank beat. So bear with me. So first, I'd like to thank trustee Cindy Schofield for her service to all of us over the past few months. I appreciate all you've done for our Wayne Westland Community Schools, the board, and for me as a newcomer to Wayne Westland. So I really appreciate it. At our policy board workshop the other night, your fellow board members sort of jokingly said that they love to finish all the policy work before you leave, and I certainly understand why they said that. It's been a pleasure to work with you. You're a contributor in every way, and you really try and help to make sure the benefits are for our students. So it's been an absolute pleasure to get to know you, to work with you, and I hope to see you around, even though you're not going to be sitting up here with us.
I'll still be around.
Yeah. Second, I'd like to wish all of our board members, the staff, the students, our parents, and the broader community a safe and joyful holiday season as we come up upon that in the next couple of weeks. Right now, we are waiting for our legislature to finish their work for this particular calendar year. And while the work they do addresses many important issues like our roads and our schools, I expect them to address those issues in ways that solve problems versus creating problems or removing problems. In particular, the current road package passed by the House will have a negative impact on this school system and many other school systems. If the bill were adopted today, as it currently is written, the bill from the House, over the next six years, Wayne Westland Community Schools will lose approximately $500 per pupil. So we are committed here to providing the best education for the children of our community, but we must have the means to do it. So I would ask that anybody who has an opinion about that, please let your views be known. Our legislators are certainly our representatives. So I want to make sure everybody do the House bill right now and take a look at that. Finally, I have been on the job for just over 100 days. When I came on board, I created an entry plan to guide my assessment of the district during those first 100 days. And that plan used a framework of characteristics for effective school districts and effective district leadership. It was centered on understanding this district's vision, approaches to instruction and related outcomes, and how this organization is set up to ensure that personnel can complete their work and how the resources are allocated to attain our desired results. Assessment included conversation with our personnel, participation in meetings, reviews of district and school improvement plans, reviews of our assessment results, and many, many other documents that we have as a school district. I'd like to briefly describe my assessment of the district and the next step recommendations that I believe will enhance the success of our district and really ignite more collaboration, dialogue, and actions that'll lead to continuous improvement. So first, I'd like to mention enrollment. It is unfortunately expected to continue to decline, and the majority of that decline is related to fewer births and a smaller school age population. This is not unique to Wayne Westland Community Schools. While opening the district to schools of choice has brought non-resident students into the district, our district continues to see a declining population. We need to plan for a smaller student population at the same time as plan to ensure we have the highest enrollments possible. Related to student achievement, it certainly is here the focus of all of our schools and all of our departments. This is evidenced by our district and school improvement plans and the school and department-based goals and activities that go on every day. While the state has established growth targets for every state, every district in the state and school, we are including those in our improvement plans. Our students are demonstrating success in many areas. Assessment proficiency and graduation rates, as well as other success indicators, though, have to increase to demonstrate that our students are achieving the required targets. Students must behave in ways that support their learning, and our systems of support have to be in place. We've put a number of those in place over the last few years with Leader and Me and Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, among others, and we need to continue that. A long-range strategic and instructional plan would assist our district with successful implementation of the many initiatives designed to increase student achievement and to produce other necessary student outcomes. Related to curriculum, instruction, and assessment, the district is, as you heard tonight, in the process of ensuring the Common Core and other required standards guide instruction for all of our students. Best instructional practices and the use of formative and summative assessments is expected. Numerous and various programs and services exist to serve the Wayne Westland Community Schools and our broader community. Preschoolers through senior citizens benefit from our programs and services. As the state requirements and the needs of our community change, for one example, an increase in the number of students eligible for free or reduced lunch, additional programs and services have been added. Our personnel express frustration related to the impact of implementing multiple new initiatives simultaneously. Their concerns are centered on their ability to implement initiatives successfully, and we want to support that. Formal program evaluation is not completed as a normal and standard part of every implementation. We want to make sure we set up assessment of new initiatives to assure that attaining the desired results is really what we get. It will help us to operate more effectively and more efficiently. Our district and school improvement efforts include a targeted and phased approach to school improvement that includes evidence-based planning, accountability measures, and ongoing monitoring and progress toward each of the goals in those plans. The district has organized its work around four strategies: professional learning communities, best practices, instruction in every lesson, interventions and enrichments for our students, and stakeholder involvement and engagement. And these are a part of the improvement plans of each of our schools. Common activities have been designed and implemented to ensure the attainment of our goals, and our plans are aligned with one another, meaning the school improvement plan and the district's plan support one another and are not created in isolation. And the success of these plans is truly evident in the number of reductions of focus and priority schools that we have had over the last year. Related to communications and relationships, we plan to build and maintain good communication and relations, quality and effective learning communities, and a positive district culture. A more collaborative culture is desired by personnel as well as other stakeholders. At the same time, we're working to make sure our committee participation is just enough and not too much, such that the amount of time people are in meetings is the amount necessary to get the work done and that we streamline our processes. We're also looking at how we share information and receive information. We want to make sure our methods meet the needs of our staff, our students, our parents, and our broader community. In terms of infrastructure, this is about making sure all of our departments and our services support the work of teaching and learning. This includes finances, personnel, facilities, and technology. We have an accurate budget development and reporting process. We have a variety of strategies that have been implemented to ensure a balanced budget. Additional efficiencies and greater effectiveness may be achieved through advanced and collaborative planning, such as the development of a strategic plan, a long-term instructional plan, and a long-term facilities plan. Consideration of a zero-based budgeting methodology may provide the flexibility needed to annually align our resources to the changing needs of our district. In terms of personnel, the number of staff, particularly teachers and secretaries, has been declining. While Wayne Westland Community Schools has the ability to pay for some of its personnel through grants, the majority of our personnel expenses are charged to the general fund. The decline in employees is related to both the decline in enrollments and school funding reductions. Personnel have made concessions to ensure the district operates with a balanced budget and also enhancing collaboration throughout the hiring process and the development of a comprehensive talent development model would be beneficial for our district. Given declining enrollment and the age of school facilities, it would be beneficial to develop a long-range facilities plan that is aligned with the district's vision and the long-range strategic plan. The plan must consider the best utilization of both vacant properties and closed or unused facilities. Technology is both an instructional service and an operational service. A review of the effectiveness and efficient use of all technology is needed. While our staff celebrate and appreciate the array of tools available for student use in day-to-day learning, there are some frustrations with technology and the way it works for our staff members. For example, the computers our teachers use, all I can say is, are very, very old. A long-range plan that includes evaluation of the infrastructure, available tools, the usefulness of the tools for both students and staff, and an evaluation of the way technology assists with the attainment of our district goals is needed. Strategic governance is important to our success. You, the Board of Education, and I have already established goals for the year, and I believe we're working collaboratively to ensure successful leadership of our district. And I'll be developing a plan for the implementation of those goals as well as the progress monitoring of them. Finally, regarding our continuous improvement, we have to engage in improvement processes that are evidence-based, reflective, and include the consideration of feedback from others and other data. In some areas, we are well underway, and in other areas, we need to make adjustments or improvements. Currently, individual departments and/or schools develop improvement plans. However, other departments and/or schools may be unaware of each other's work. As a part of reflecting on ourselves, I'm continuing to gather feedback about the strengths and challenges of the district. All staff will receive a summary of the data, and a superintendent's steering committee will be established to provide a strategic guidance for the district that includes the perspectives of our personnel. This group will be the first group to help with the analysis and prioritization of the data being collected. Overall, Wayne Westland Community Schools has many effective practices in place. This is a quality school district. I am thrilled to be a part of it and to be here. Providing great services to students is what our staff do every day, and we are producing results for our students. We also have areas, however, that we can improve. And as a summary, I'd like to recommend and will be planning to leave the district through the following work. I'll just recap very quickly. The declining student population and ways to ensure the highest enrollments possible; strategies, programs, and services that increase student achievement; the use of program and service evaluation to determine the most effective and efficient use of our resources; long-term and comprehensive planning for implementation of initiatives prior to implementation; the purposes and effectiveness of committees and the ways that personnel provide input and feedback into the ongoing success of our district; coherence among all departments and alignment of departments with the attainment of our district's goals; using a budget methodology such as zero-based budgeting that allows for flexible annual planning and the alignment of resources to the district's goals; enhancing the hiring process and developing a comprehensive talent development system; finding the best utilization of our vacant properties in all district facilities that is aligned with our strategic vision, and certainly a review of technology and its uses. It sounds like a lot of work. It is a lot of work, but it's important work, and I think it would help us to move forward, again, building on the strong base that we have in place. And certainly, that was a lot of information, and I would entertain any questions, but that's what I have to share with you tonight.
Before we look forward, did anyone have any concerns? Thank you. Dear Walker. Moving on to item number 18.5.15, Board Education Committee Report. I believe we only have one, and that's from the Finance Committee. Dr. Weaver, please.
Yes, thank you. President from the Finance Committee. Meeting date, Monday, December 1st, 2014. Members present: Michelle Armala, Tom Buckelup, Trav Griffin, David Callmire, John Albrecht, and Jim Larson Schidler. Members absent, excused, Fred Weaver. Number one, the cost of salary increase. Jim Larson Schidler presented information regarding the cost of salary increases in response to a request by a committee member. Discussion included total cost of various off-schedule salary increases and cost of the general fund versus grant funds. Factors to consider included the loss of 314 FTE versus projected 50 FTE, and not knowing the consequences of the potential lame duck legislative action and the impact it may have. The budget amendment is being reviewed and will be presented to the board at its January board meeting. Number two, after-school meal program pilot at John Glenn and Wayne Memorial High Schools. Effective December 1st, the district is initiating a pilot. Effective December 1st, the district is initiating a pilot program at the two high schools to serve meals to students who participate in and after-school activities. The program was presented and discussed with union groups and administration to develop the pilot program. The program will be monitored and reviewed throughout the winter sports period ending in March. At that time, we will determine if the program is meeting its design and whether to continue it for the remainder of the 14, 15 school year. The program is universal, meaning there is no charge to the students who receive meals. The district is reimbursed for the number of meals covered by CACFE, the Child and Adult Care Fruit Program. The only cost to the district is to provide additional hours to food service staff to prepare and distribute the meals. Reimbursement from the CACFE should cover the cost of the additional food service employee hours. Supervision by an adult is required as part of the program and will be performed voluntarily by coaches, tutors, and other adults supervising after-school programs. Number three, the textbook purchase, 7th and 8th grade ELA. Aaron Baughman, representing the ELA Curriculum Committee, presented the need for 7th and 8th grade ELA textbooks to the cabinet in spring 2014 for budgeting school year 2014-15 budgeting and spring of 2015 adoption. The 7th and 8th grade ELA teachers piloted three options. They recommended Houghton Mifflin's Collection Series. This recommendation was taken to Curriculum Committee and approved for a six-year, all-inclusive program with consumable workbooks and non-hinging access. Aaron notified Houghton Mifflin that the district's intention to adopt the Collection Series. Houghton Mifflin offered the district a discount of from the $223,300 to $186,640 if purchased prior to December 31st, 2014 for business financial reasons. The company also provided $11,200 of professional development. The savings of the December 2014 adoption over the spring adoption in 2015 represents Upon Board approval at the December 8, 2014 Board meeting, the savings of approximately $50,000 will be reduced from the general fund textbook budget for the January budget amendment. If the Board approves this resolution at the December meeting and the purchase is made before December 31st, there will be significant savings to the district. At the Board of Education meeting of December 8, 2014, the Board will be asked to approve this textbook purchase. And finally, the vacant building review. Jim Larson Schidler reviewed the status of the costs of maintaining the district's vacant buildings, which is attached, and the request for proposal was prepared and administered by Wayne Risa. An independent firm, Plant Moran Cressa, was hired to assess future use versus cost of maintaining the various buildings. Three recommendations will be brought to the Board for approval at December 8, 2014 meeting. One, lease of Vandenberg to the City of Wayne as temporary housing for City Hall. Two, recommendation for the demolition of Kettering, Lincoln, Madison in the winter-spring of 2015, and the demolition of Vandenberg in the fall of 2015. The City of Wayne will incur all costs in maintaining Vandenberg and any additional unforeseen costs of the demolition. The third resolution will be recommending the advance of general funds in the 2014-15 to the sinking fund to proceed with demolition. Repayment will be subsequent to July 1st, 2015. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Moving on to item number 186.15, since some comments on agenda items.
Just a couple of questions. Mr. Larson Schidler had stated that there's going to be no money in the sinking fund come, well, before July 1st of 2015, and bid package four was approved by you all at the last meeting. If there are change orders to that bid package, how do we pay for that? Or is that affected by there being no money in the sinking fund if change orders are requested or required? Plant Moran Cressa has stated that this property, these schools, once vacant, are worth more being vacant than they are with the buildings on them. What are we basing that off of? Is this the list price that we're asking now? Or how do we base more money off of something that we have no idea what the value is? I guess the question being, what is the difference between money that we might get now and more money later? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. So, our next agenda item is item 187.15. Before we go there, this is the last meeting of the year, and Mrs. Schofield, this is the last meeting with us. So, well, on this night.
This time.
This is the last meeting.
Farewell to her.
So, on behalf of the Board of Education, we just want to say thank you so much, because when you left, we knew that you had no intentions on coming back for women, but you did take time out of your busy schedule to come and help us during a crucial time. And your expertise that you have had, for those who don't know, Mrs. Schofield has served on the Board for over 12 years. It's 13, probably now 14, 13 years. And she brings a lot of expertise to us, and she helps us to understand different ways of seeing things, and because of the experience that you have had. And so I just want to say thank you so much for taking your time out to come back and help us. It was difficult times, but there were easy times because of you. And I thank you so much. So, with that being said, we just want to give you a little something from the Board of Education.
Oh, my. Oh, thank you.
I'll send that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you. And so, now, we're going to move on to...
It's okay. Mrs. Madison.
We've had a lot of time tonight into presentations, which all, hard work went into in both of those for our buildings, and thank you, gentlemen, for that, and everyone who's had to see an assistant, and into transitioning into some teachers moving up and principals. Thank you. And the ELA program. We're winding down into another year of holiday season time and hustle and bustle, and I hope everyone's safe and enjoys their family time together over the holidays. And I just want to remind you that in two years, we do have elections going, so don't get down there. But nothing like a good, healthy competition. And that's all I have for the evening, and I hope everyone has a happy state holiday.
Thank you, Mrs. Madison. Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd just like to wish the community, everyone, a happy holiday and a safe one. And Cindy, I'm not going to reiterate what Shana said, because I concur with everything. You're just a wonderful person, a great board member, and we were fortunate that you chose to come back, and it's been great knowing you and your family all these years. And so, I wish you well in the future and look forward to continuing to work with you. And that's all I have for the night. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Dr. Weaver.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Caleb and Emily for leading us in the pledge of allegiance tonight, and also say to Mrs. Schofield, it's been a joy serving with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver.
Mrs. Medell. In front of you, as usual, with the monthly meeting of School Board, Medell, is your head start. Financial report, as reported by the federal government, and I'm pleased to say that they are at full enrollment. They are also in the process of testing the students. Not only do they test them academically, but also physically. They are giving physicals to the students. They are testing eyes, ears. This is a program that deals with the whole child, not just the academic side of a child in their program. They have a parent program just recently in the evening for their parents, so they address all sides of a child's development, from parenting all the way through to academics. I got a chance this week to stuff the bus in a Kmart parking lot, and this is something our transportation department does along with the Goodfellows. And I know we have a program coming up this, one of the evenings this week for the Westland Foundation, which, you know, the donations will also go to the Goodfellows. They are trying to... Is it tomorrow night? I get my, this time of the year, everything is on my calendar, and it's kind of like, you know, okay, where do I go next? So, it's one of those very busy times of the year, but they try very hard to help our students, whether it's with toys, clothing, or school supplies. So, if you are looking for a place to donate during this holiday season, please consider the Goodfellows. I got a chance to go to the JROTC competitions that have been held lately. One of them was at Glenn, and if you remember back a couple weeks ago, we had an ice storm on a Saturday morning, and I was very impressed how many school districts, their JROTC programs made it to our facility, but also the boys' basketball team were coming in. I was very impressed that boys, high school boys, would come out in the treacherous robe conditions to come to basketball practice. I was impressed. But I guess if you are in a sports program, you are committed to that sport, and so are our OTC students, as they worked at the Military Ball, which a couple of us had a chance to attend, and I understand the guest speaker was wonderful at that Military Ball. I got a chance to go to Hicks Leadership Day and see what's going on. After sitting through the presentations and everything, I decided to go to kindergarten classroom, because if anybody's going to screw it up and get it wrong, it's a kindergarten student, because they get really nervous and upset. And so I went into kindergarten classroom. That kid could just, word by word, tell me exactly what was going on, what their classroom mission statement was, what leadership skill they were working on that week. It was impressive that the kids knew it that well. Holiday concerts are coming up. Some of them have already occurred last week, and going forward, we still have a few more middle school concerts, elementary concerts. Wayne Memorial has a couple concerts coming up also. Great family fun, and it's free. So, check the calendars and bring your family. I had a chance this evening before coming to this board meeting to go to Switzer Elementary School. They had a science night. So, as we are moving forward into the school year, there are a lot of curriculum content nights, like science night, math night, reading night, going on in our elementary buildings. Wayne Memorial has their holiday program on Friday. All Wayne Westland students are invited to come to this. They do all kinds of great activities with the students besides singing. Drought Department will be dressed up and going around from room to room. They'll be cooking, decorating, and all kinds of activities for the students to participate. I just got an email today from Sean over at the Champions Program. They have a Champions Day at the State Wayne Theater on December 20th, and it isn't one particular performance or anybody, it's anybody who comes to the show on December 20th and purchases a ticket for one of the movies that is showing. Part of that money will be donated to the Champions Program. So, mark it on your calendars, December 20th. And congratulations to our new hires. Angie, I've worked with for a lot of years in the math department, and she knows how hard we work, and, you know, she's already hit the ground running, and congratulations to Kurt. I'm very impressed he had an entourage from the Transportation Department with him to welcome him into our school district. So, that is really a good sign. We will miss Jason, as Mrs. Schofield mentioned. He's been here for several years and always has a smile when I come into the building, which is better than when I first started coming into the building, because he had his book of theories. He's like, oh, my God, there's a school board trustee in my building. What did I do wrong? So, he's gotten to the point now where he's relaxed, he smiles, but now he's leaving, so we will miss him. Good holiday season to everybody. Stay safe out there. Please come back to us in January 5th in one piece, please. Come back safely and ready to hit the books again. And to the rest of you, have a good holiday also. Stay safe.
Thank you, Mrs. Medell. Mr. Buckelwood.
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Bessick for bringing Caleb and Emily to us this evening. Also, congratulations to Mrs. Aley and also to Mr. Miles for their appointments this evening. And also, special congratulations to DeShawn Baker-Williams. DeShawn recently was nominated, elected to the Pre-Press All-State Green Team as an offensive lineman from John Glenn High School, and that is a singular accomplishment. He should be congratulated over and over for that. One of the really good things about being a board trustee is that you get to see kids at their best. And so, in the last couple of weeks, members of the Board have attended two academic letter award presentations, one for John Glenn, one for Wayne Memorial. And following that up, we were invited to attend the induction ceremony at John Glenn for about 60 honor society members. You can't help but feel good about the little role that you have in this big district when you get to see the kids perform that way. It was truly special. Again, with Mrs. Medell, I attended the JROTC Military Ball, and Mrs. Medell and I danced a ball. It was amazing to watch.
It must have been solid, Mrs. Medell. I was using a cane that night.
I know, I still hurt. Dr. Armala mentioned the lame duck session. The good thing about lame duck is that it's going to die pretty soon. The fact is that until it does die, it can be very, very dangerous, and that is especially the case with our legislature at this time. What they do with the roads, of course, has to be done, but the penalty that the House could impose on schools is unbearable. The method that they've chosen to identify districts in financial stress, while it doesn't at this point affect Wayne Westland, I understand, there's nothing to say that one of those nineteen states here or bad finances might be applied to us, and then we have all sorts of reporting and so forth, so we should keep an eye on that. I appreciated Dr. Armala's 100-day report. It puts me in mind, President Roosevelt, and the report that he gave of his first three months in office. For those of you who recall, it was all about a new deal, and that really is what Dr. Armala is offering us here at Wayne Westland. She mentioned a good many things. One of them was a collaborative attitude, something where stakeholders have a right to speak, but the assumption is that when they speak, someone is going to listen to them, and that's a refreshing change. The other thing, I think, has to do with the idea that we're going to be a data-driven school district. We're not going to start something unless the data is there to support, promise that it has a good likelihood of succeeding, and we're not going to continue anything unless the data is there to suggest that it's working, and that, too, is a refreshing change. So, I want to give special thanks to Dr. Armala. So, I want to give a special thanks to Dr. Harmala for those two items and all of the other things contained in your report. Thank you. All right, happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Buckeloo. Mrs. Schofield.
Well, first of all, it's been a busy month. Like has been mentioned, we've had academic letter award ceremonies, we've had plays to go to, there's still concerts to attend, and it's an exciting time of the year, and it's fun to get out into the buildings. It's fun to see the students because that's what we're all here for. I'd like to offer congratulations to the cross-country coach at Wayne Memorial, Mr. Tom Gibson, who was named the Observer Coach of the Year for Men's Cross Country, and the forerunners who made the first and second team. It just shows how far the program has come over there for Mr. Gibson to be named the Coach of the Year. It's really sad to see these buildings be torn down. In 1998, when I served on the bond committee, and we toured all of these buildings, and we went through and we saw what bad shape they were in, and we never dreamed that less than 20 years later, our enrollment would have fallen to the point it's fallen today and the point that it felt four years ago when we needed to close the buildings. Kettering was the very first school building that I ever went to in Wayne Westland as a little kindergartner. And it, I can still, when I think of that building, I can still picture it in my mind and I can still smell white paste. Remember the old white paste and the ditto's that we used to use? Two odors that just seemed to go with an old school building. But it's sad to see the history go. It's sad to see the history go in Lincoln when you think when the government developed that piece of property and they built those buildings and those homes for World War II. They expected to continue to educate students for years, and they did educate students for years. It's sad to see our enrollment fall. And as Dr. Harmala pointed out, it's just not Wayne Westland, it's across the whole state of Michigan, and it's across our whole nation. And, you know, birth rates have fallen. But regardless of the sentimental reasons why I would like to have the buildings remade, they needed to be, they need to be torn down. And when we closed the buildings, I think we naively maybe thought that enrollment, the economy would turn around and enrollment would go back up, and within a couple of years, maybe we would be able to open one or two of those buildings back up. And unfortunately, it didn't happen that way. And then, it's to say farewell to all of you. I served 12 and a half years, and then I took a year and a half off, and then I came back and I've served another half a year. I think 13 years is a good number to go out on. I can, you know, I can go out, I can be proud of what I've done. I, you know, I feel, I don't feel I've overstayed my welcome, and I think sometimes that happens to people in elected positions, that we don't know when is the right time to leave. And I really, I felt it 12, I felt it when I left the first time, and I feel it again this time. It's the right thing to do for me, it's the right thing for my life. I feel I'm leaving the district in wonderful hands. I couldn't be more pleased with the choice that you, the rest of this Board, made before I was appointed. You have been wonderful to work with. I think that you, your fresh eyes, your fresh view on things really give me hope for this community and for the future of this school district. Your 100-day report was wonderful to read through. It was exciting to see things through your eyes. Melanie, I think you're down there. I'm very welcome to turn the seat over to you, and good luck with the future of your six years. I'm sure you'll do wonderful things, and I'm sure the rest of this Board will do wonderful things, as long as we always keep children first and foremost in every decision that we make, and as long as we don't let other issues get in our way and we serve the children of this district and this community, the decisions will always be the right decision. And with that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And if you need me, you'll find me at home, except for on Tuesdays afternoons where you'll find me at Tap Galloway reading to my first, second, third, and fourth graders. So, you can find me there if you need me.
Thank you, Mrs. Schofield. As usual, by the time it gets to me, everything has been said, but what I want to do is I just want to thank Caleb and Emily again for leading Mrs. Schofield. I want to just tell Dr. Harmala that I appreciate her transparency and sharing with us her 100-day view, and I think that you are a great, it was said the other day, but a great fit.
Thank you.
And I appreciate what you have done and your visions and what you see for our district. And as I said when we first brought you on, and I still say it now, I think that you're going to take us to a whole new level and a whole new level of excitement and take this district places that we probably have never seen before. And I say that in a good way, which says that we're going to grow and we're going to expand and do some amazing things together. With that being said, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And I, as always, I appreciate each and every one of you for coming out and spending your evening with us here, and I thank my Board members, my fellow Board members, for your input and for us all working together today. And thank you. And at that, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Just before we do that, I would like to add that the Policy Committee is still working on remanking all of the policies.
Because I know Sally, we have a meeting on Wednesday night. I will be there, I promise.
Hey, teacher, you're right on my way up.
Oh, you'll be willing to pick me up and bring me up. It's so hard to say goodbye. I keep that in mind, Sally.
I moved to Jersey.
I support that. All his favorites. I have it, have it.